All right, welcome to the May 21 Fisher's City Council Meeting. We have a, let's see, we have announce announcements from the nonprofit committee. Who would like to share that from the nonprofit committee?
No, don't start pointing fingers now.
How is it possible that Brad and Pete aren't willing to speak?
I can't believe this.
The nonprofit committee has opened up its 2018-2019 grant application process. I think that released, oh, probably over the last couple of weeks.
May 1st.
And they are due back by June 14th. Brad should have done this, but that's okay. The, so we're looking forward to seeing all those who apply for those not-for-profit grants, and we will act accordingly once receiving them.
Thank you for the update. You guys have the National Public Works Week proclamation and the Mental Health Month. Would anybody like to give those?
I can give the first one.
Go for it.
Okay.
We don't have them up here.
It's here on the agenda. Public Works Association. Whereas the American Public Works Association has celebrated the annual National Public Works Week since 1960, and whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital, important to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people in the city of Fishers, whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees from state and local governments and private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our transportation, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens, and whereas it is in the public interest for citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Fishers to gain knowledge and to maintain a progressive interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in the community. Therefore, I Scott Fadness, Mayor of the City of Fishers, do hereby proclaim, May 20th to the 26th, 2018, as National Public Works Week, and the city of Fishers and all residents are encouraged to celebrate it. And on behalf of Brad and myself, or kind of the technical people, and we do appreciate all the efforts, a lot of it's unsung, people in the wastewater treatment plant, I'm sorry, Rich, actually, everybody up here. There's a lot of people that are just unsung, they work every day in the wastewater treatment plant, they, we see them when they plow the roads in winter, but there's all sorts of people doing all sorts of things, and we thank them for their efforts.
Thank you, David. And for the Mental Health Month?
City of Fisher proclamation, whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas there is a strong research that diet, exercise, sleep, and stress management can help all Americans protect their health and well-being, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full productive lives, and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares a burden of mental health problems, and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Therefore, I, not me, him, Scott Fadness, Mayor of the City of Fishers, do hereby proclaim May 2018 as Mental Health Month, the city of Fishers, and all that reside are encouraged to celebrate it.
Thank you, Pete. Appreciate all the hard work, Mayor Fadness leading the effort, the city, the school system, just everybody in our community rallying around this cause, things that are happening in our nation as we see in the news almost daily now of tragedies. One of those, one of those areas is mental health, and it takes strong people that are willing to come out and say, "Look, you know, I struggle with this," I, you know, with anxiety or depression or suicidal thoughts, and when we have leaders that come out and say that, people in the community that'll come out and say that, it helps others to be able to express and feel comfortable and confident that they can share what's going on, and they don't feel like they're an outsider, or they're the only ones dealing with it. So, I just appreciate our citizens of Fishers that really have rallied behind this. This is not a political cause, it's something transformational that will live on for long past any of our administrations, so appreciate that. Onto presentations, we have our Fishers City Government Academy Spring 2018 graduation. Dan, you come up, and just real excited about, excited about this program.
Thank you, council. For the record, Dan Domsick, Fishers Parks and Recreation. Tonight, I have the honor of presenting our Spring 2018 graduates of the Fishers City Government Academy. This program is a free inside look at how local government operates. The students take about nine to 10 weeks going from department to department, learning about just how their local government functions. I mean, that's everything from what we were just talking about in the Public Works Department to how Judge Hankey scares people with a lead foot, how everything works. In this semester, I know back in the winter, I kind of said we're gonna have a little bit of a longer roll call with about 26 people. This semester, with a couple people finishing up some requirements, we have 30 graduates tonight. I just think that says something a lot about our community, that they want to know about what's going on, they want to know how things work, and what's so great about this program and why I particularly enjoy it is that after the fact, they have an opportunity to continue serving in the community, and we hope that they do that, whether it's through the alumni program, we have at least one government academy graduate on the city council, one of our graduates is the co-founder of Launch Fishers. This is a really great way to make relationships, and that's a program that I keep pretty near and dear to my heart. I won't pontificate too much on the program, but what I'd like to do is call Mayor Fadness and Council President, President Zimmerman over here. Graduates, as you hear your name, come on up for your efficient government congratulatory handshake, and then we're going to line you up kind of over here for a couple quick class pictures, and don't take off right afterwards, we'll hand out your diplomas in the lobby. So, just kind of going through the list here, Amber Garcia, Anna Baugh, Angela Summers, Benjamin Irvin, Beth Ann Buttonbaum, Bruce Gigerich, Patricia Gigerich, Calvin Robertson, Christopher Trich, Cynthia Bodner, Cynthia Howf, David Skirlock, Diane Lucas, Jamie Zaleski, Jen Glannon, Jim Lucas, Kevin McClure, Kimberly Walsh, Matt Kavanaugh, Michael Snowden, Pete McGinnis, Rachel Lindeman, Ron Nicodemus, Sandra Welch Richard, Srikanth Condey, Wayne McCarg, Tom Muhaw, Edwina McCarg, April Sterling, Nate Shublow, and Dan Koblusnick. Let's give our graduates a round of applause. All right, thanks, everybody. Thank you, council, thank you, Mayor Fadness.
It looks like we have a Boy Scout troop up here. Would you like to come up and make a present, or share who you are and where you're from and your names?
So, we are from St. Pius the 10th, Troop 401, and we're here to learn about citizenship and community. I'm Lisa Drow.
I'm Gregory Drow.
I'm Anthony Cates.
I'm Nick Guzelli-Lee.
I'm Alum Dixon.
I'm John Bull.
Well, it's good to meet, good to meet you very much.
Everyone.
Absolutely, thank you. Yeah, thanks for what you do. And on note, with regard to city government and young people being involved, Mayor Fadness visited Fishers Junior High today to give an award out for the students, We the People, which is a national program designed for students to learn about civics and be able to debate it, learn about the Constitution, and they went for second year in a row from Fishers Junior High, national champions. So, they could not be here tonight because of an award ceremony at the school, so Mayor Fadness visited the school, and it was a good time, and so just, we just want to commend them for all their great efforts. Finance Committee report, Chair Williams Stoller?
We had a finance committee meeting this month, we reviewed all the topics, we did not have a quorum, so we were unable to vote.
All right, thank you for the update. All right, a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Pete, second by John, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Council, Brandon Dickinson for the record, Director of Economic Development. The first item for you today, we have a few related to the yard. The first item is an amendment to the project agreement. As you may know, Thompson Thrift and the Building Corp. and the city agreed to a project agreement back in May of 2017 for a $40 million retail development consisting of retail restaurants and a culinary accelerator building to be located at 116th Street and commonly referred to as the yard. Since entering into the agreement, the developer has proposed an additional, separate, and distinct project that consists of constructing a multifamily building and garage on the project site. Developer expects that the development cost for the multifamily building and the garage would be no less than $30 million, and has requested economic development assistance in the form of TIF from the multifamily project to support a bond issue for the project. So, in consideration for the additional bond issuance for the new multifamily building and garage, the developers agreed to increase the minimum taxpayer agreement amount to 85%. If you remember, originally, for the retail, it was just 75, so we were able to renegotiate that component within this amendment and increase the minimum taxpayer agreement amount to 85%. And so, the multifamily project will have a 100% capture for it, so the new minimum taxpayer agreement amounts would be 85 and 100, which is an improvement from the previous deal. So, I bring before you the amendment, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
What, just one clarifying point, I think Brandon did a great job summarizing. When, when he says 100% capture, what we mean is we have identified what the amount that could be lent in the multifamily project, and we backed into what the minimum amount we would need from property taxes to cover that debt. And so, they, the developer is guaranteeing a minimum taxpayer agreement that will cover the debt obligation associated with the multifamily. On the retail, instead of them guaranteeing 75% of the debt, we're now having them guarantee 85% of the debt. So, I think that's an important clarification, an important deal component on this project.
Okay. Any questions or comments from council?
Todd, real quick, I know we've got several items, I just want to make one quick comment, just, it kind of encompasses everything. I, I know this came before us about a month or so ago, basically, the, the addition of the residential on top of the, the already approved retail, and I voted against that, and that, that was approved. So, the way I look at things is I look at things going forward, so I'm trying to take a look at, at how the project's constructed now. So, I spent a little bit of time talking to the developer, and I appreciate their, their efforts and willingness to, to meet, so I met with them personally, and I also had several phone conversations to go through some of the performa data, because a lot, you guys have done a great job, you kind of turn the screws a little bit more, but I want to make sure that everything works to both sides, and some of that I look at, because some of their performa data, sometimes, will you do this, this, and this, they'll say yes, and then they'll make some changes in the performa, and sometimes they'll shave it a little bit too close, and then we find a situation where five to 10 years down the road, we have an issue. So, those are the reasons why I wanted to talk to them and go through that, and I won't go through the, the details in, in this meeting, but what I can say is just from the industry standard of the things that I do in my day job, I went through that, and I feel that they're, they have everything in relation to where it should be in their performa, so I'm comfortable with where they are. The rent, I think, is a little bit aggressive, but the other things like expense ratios, the increases in income, increases in expenses, things like that are what I would expect to see, so I'll be supportive of that. Like I said, it was not before, the way I look at things though is going forward, and I did do some of that due diligence, I'll just share with everybody here, that it, it went within the boundaries of what I would expect to see.
I'd just like to thank Dave, Dave's the one of the council and government, I appreciate you taking the time to do that thing.
Sure. I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
A motion by Pete of second.
Second.
Second by John, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I abstain.
And one abstention. Motion passes. Onto 052118B.
Okay, this should be the request to approve an ordinance authorizing the city of Fishers taxable economic development revenue bonds for the yard retail project. So, again, we, we kind of generally went over that, so this would be, this would be pursuant to the project agreement with Thompson Thrift, and then the city would issue the bonds and lend the proceeds to the Town Hall Building Corp. to make the proceeds available to finance building costs related to the original project, and respectfully request council approve.
I'm gonna make a motion to suspend the rules and approve on first reading.
Motion by Pete to suspend the rules, and second. Second by Cecilia, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain?
Now, I'll make a motion to approve item eight.
Second.
Okay, motion by Pete, second by Eric, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And you abstain, and Rich abstains. All right, thank you. Moving on to 052118C.
Okay, this should be the request to approve ordinance authorizing city of Fishers taxable economic development revenue bonds for the yard garage project. This is the second part, and again, pursuant to the recently approved amendment to the Thompson Thrift project agreement. We would issue bonds, lend proceeds to Town Hall Building Corp., and then Town Hall Building Corp. would make proceeds available to pay for a portion of the costs related to parking garage, supporting a second project, a second and distinct project at the yard, and would respectfully request approval on this item as well.
Motion to suspend the rules and approve on first reading.
Motion by Pete to suspend the rules, second by Selena, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And Rich abstains.
Now, a motion to approve. Second. Item nine.
Okay, motion by Pete, second by John, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Rich abstains. All right. Onto R 052118E.
This is the Fishers Ellipse project agreement. As everyone may have heard, we had put out an RFP for two pieces of property owned by the city of Fishers back in the late 2017 Q4. These parcels are to the north of the amphitheater under construction, currently being used as surface parking lots. You approved the first development last month for Flexware innovation to make the western parcel its home, and today I bring you Fishers Ellipse, the, the selected developer for a 45,000 square foot Class A office building approximately valued at $10 million with construction costs. The development would also allow for a public parking lot that would be available to the public after work hours and on weekends. So, we'll be adding some additional parking to the amphitheater to help out with the increased engagement and attendance to our very exciting summer programs moving forward. The incentives associated with this project are a waiver of impact fees and a tax abatement totaling $1 million over the course of 10 years. This is a rendering of the building looking northwest off the ellipse, and as you can see, we'll also provide additional ellipse parking on Municipal Drive as well, and you can see a rendering of the Flexware building over to the left and the west. We are very proud of the results of the RFP, we believe that we obtained two fantastic proposals that will do great justice to the amphitheater as office bookends. I know the broker for the, for this development has received significant interest even before today's announcement, so we're very excited about the types of companies that we anticipate will very shortly be announced as moving into this building. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions council may have.
Any questions for council, comments?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Eric, second by Selena, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And abstain.
Abstain.
So, Pete and John abstain. Moving on to, wait a minute, was that E?
That was 10.
That was 10, yep. R 052118F.
Okay, I've got a heavy deck here, so I think I'm going in order, but please do correct me if I'm, I'm out of order, but this should be a declaratory resolution of the city of Fishers designating property as an economic revitalization area, and this is for the Fishers Ellipse ERA. As you know, the two-step process for authorizing an abatement pursuant to state code is to first have a declaratory resolution, and then in a month, we'll have a confirmatory resolution. This is simply enabling us to use tax abatement on the property for the Fishers Ellipse project, and I'm happy to answer any questions council may have.
Any questions or comments from council?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Eric.
Second.
Second by Rich, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Abstain.
And, Pete and John abstain. All right, on to R 052118C.
More or less of the same, this is a declaratory resolution of the city of Fishers designating the AMP Northwest ERA, which is the Flexware project, as an economic revitalization area. Again, this is the first step of our two-step process as a declaratory resolution to enable us to use tax abatement on the property. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete.
Second.
Second by Rich, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Anyone need to abstain? All right, motion passes. R 052118K.
A resolution of the Fishers City Council concerning tax abatement compliance for the 2018 pay, 2019 tax year. So, annually, as you guys know, the entities that have been previously have earned tax abatements within the city has to submit to the city a compliance with statement of benefits form related to each of their respective abatements and projects, and then annually required to review, the CF1s to determine whether each has been substantially compliant with its respective statements of benefits, and then if not, whether the failure is so substantial that it would cause by factors beyond the control of the taxpayer. The resolution concerns approval of the CF1s. In reviewing them, there are no issues, all of them are in substantial compliance. I am happy to answer any questions you may have related to any of the specific abatements, should you have any.
Can you clarify such a name?
So, it's a very vague term, but the, the state basically gives us a spectrum of factors to consider for whether a company is working towards the numbers in a positive manner. As I said, sometimes there are things beyond their control, we really don't have that. A lot of the abatements are over a number of years as well, so they have to hit the number by year five or year 10, and you may only be in year two. So, as long as we see that upward trend towards compliance, we typically view that as substantially compliant. When we get towards the later years, and it, it looks like that might be an issue, we'll meet with the companies and see if, if it makes sense to terminate the abatement early, or if they do believe that given their financial position, they will be able to, to meet their expectations. And again, with these, we, we're pretty confident everyone's on the right path. They may not have hit their marks just yet, but many of them are still early in their abatement term.
Motion to approve, if we don't have any other comments.
Any other questions or comments? All right, motion by Pete, second by Selena, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Moving on to 05211, request to approve an amendment to the ordinance approving the issuance of general obligation bonds.
All right, Lisa Bradford, City Controller. The item before you, as you recall, in February, council authorized the general obligation bond in the amount of $5 million, which would be used to acquire a certain portion of Geist Waterfront Park. As we move forward into the acquisition process, we determined an issue with a cell tower that's located on this site. The cell tower is paying lease payments, and so when the city acquires the property, we will start receiving the lease payments, and we cannot purchase a revenue-producing item with a non-taxable bond. So, simply, this amendment splits the bond into a taxable and non-taxable piece, the amount still stays at 5 million. There are no questions, I'll ask that you suspend the rules.
All right, any questions or comments from council?
No, motion to suspend the rules, approve on first reading.
Motion by Pete to suspend the rules, second by Selena, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, second by Selena, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Onto R 052118.
All right, this is a request to approve additional appropriation of forfeiture funds. When we do the annual budget process, we do not appropriate any amounts in our forfeiture account. During the year, we have identified a need to replace servers for the police's division, the Internet Crimes Against Children, and this will simply allow the police department to purchase the needed servers. If there are no questions, I'll step aside for the public hearing.
All right. I'll open up for public hearing, if you, public input time, if you have any comments regarding this, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, you will have three minutes to speak. Anybody wants to speak? All right, I'll close the public hearing portion. Any comments, questions from council?
Yeah, the only comment, just, we're just moving stuff from one account to another.
This is an additional appropriation, but it was not budgeted on the forfeiture.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Pete, second by, I'm sorry, motion by John, second by Pete, all those in favor? I'm used to saying. Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Quit throwing me off, guys. All right, R 052118A.
All right, this item for you is part of the approval process regarding the financing of the new police station.
of the new police station in the garage. This resolution appropriates the proceeds of the transfer of real property in the amount not to exceed fifteen million, which is the bond amount. So basically, this gives us the legal authority to move forward and transfer the bond proceeds and spend them.
All right, I'll open up. We need a public hearing, correct?
Yeah.
Open up for public hearing. Any of those wishing to speak, step forward, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Is there no one is approaching the podium? I'll close the public hearing. Any motions?
Motion to approve.
Questions, I'm sorry, questions from council or any... Okay, motion by Pete. Second by... Second by Eric.
Not fixed.
No, we're good. We're good. Second by Eric. All those that approve?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, 052118D.
Good evening, council. Lindsey Bennett, Assistant City Attorney. I'm here on excavation permits tonight. We are asking to amend section ninety-four point one zero. This is just an update of that ordinance. We've kept a lot of things the same. We've updated a few things, such as adding a definition section so that we know who the excavator is and what the right-of-way permit is. Any person that wants to excavate in any of the City of Fisher's right-of-way has to get a right-of-way permit. That hasn't changed. That's always been the case. We did add a couple of things that the excavator needs to provide to us, such as proof of registration to do business in the state of Indiana. They have to provide proof of licensure, proof of insurance, and a big one is the IURC safety training, or eight-one-one excavation training. They also need to supply an internal safety plan. We increased the right-of-way permit amount from twenty-five dollars to fifty dollars. Open cut permits are still required for any open cuts in the streets, and we've kept the certain thoroughfares that have to have Board of Works approval before they can be open cut. We've kept the performance bonds. We kept the maintenance bonds. We did include that all excavators, including communication service providers and public utilities and private utilities.
Sorry, I don't know. Something's resetting. Maybe that's why they gave me their remote. There we go.
I don't mind not being on camera.
Are you touching something up there? A button? The button, yeah, I guess. All right, sorry, I threw you off.
Oh, no, that's okay. So all excavators, including communication service providers, private utilities, public utilities, have to get a right-of-way permit if they're going to excavate, and they have to post bonds. The big item we did add was underground pipeline hits. So the update that we're asking for says that the excavators have to comply with state law, so that means contacting eight-one-one before they dig, getting utilities marked, making sure that they hand dig within two feet of those marked utilities, and if they do have a hit, contacting the appropriate people. We added the excavator has to contact known underground utilities so that they can coordinate those excavations with those other utilities. If an underground hit does occur, then they need to call nine-one-one, eight-one-one, the underground utility that's required by state law, but also they need to contact the city engineering department so that we know when there is a hit. If the excavator is found guilty by the IURC, I'm sorry, in violation by the IURC or in another administrative body, then they're responsible for reimbursement of costs incurred by the city, so it would be inspection fees, emergency personnel costs. In the event that the excavator has four hits within a one-month period, or two hits within one week, then the city can issue a temporary or permanent stop work order. We cleaned up the penalty section just a little bit. The fines stayed the same, no less than two hundred, no more than two thousand per occurrence, but we also added that temporary and permanent stop work order language as well. I'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I do have some questions, just one question. Item section ninety-four point one seven E, in the event that there actually has four hits, underground utility lines in one month, how are we monitoring that? How are we going to keep track of that?
So that... It'll be kind of a self-reporting. Back to ninety-four point one seven C, if there is a hit, then the excavator would need to contact nine-one-one, eight-one-one, the utility that they hit, and the city engineering department. It does get a little fuzzy whenever it doesn't occur within right-of-way. This is all right-of-way regulations.
What, citizens contact? I mean, here's...
Yeah, certainly.
I tell you where it was last year. This is all on MetroNet. Let's just get it out there.
Certainly.
They were hitting gas lines all around in Windermere, and it was causing an issue. And really, a lot was just coming from residents contacting us, and us working with a number of folks, including Deputy Mayor McGrath, and Senator Merritt, and myself, and other folks. So I guess I'm... I need to understand how we're going to keep track of this and have a self-reporting mechanism, where if they do have these hits, that they get reported properly so they get pulled if they are.
Um...
I know that's hard to do. I know that's difficult to do.
It is if it's not something that we...
Even if it's not in our right-of-way, if they hit a gas line, aren't they, under state law, required to dial nine-one-one and eight-one-one and notify the underground utility regulatory body?
Yes, that's correct. So even if they are on private property and they have a gas line hit, then they would have to contact, as Deputy Mayor McGrath said, nine-one-one, eight-one-one, and the utility that they hit. So we could certainly contact eight-one-one and see if there are any reported...
Where was AT&amp;T cut last week?
I'm not aware of a cut.
Where, Sunbless?
I think it was Sunbless or in this area back here.
Because all of northeast Fishers was out of phone service for about four days. Britton Falls, Avalon, that next door was just lighting up that AT&amp;T was out.
That would be back to that on the... It wasn't.
So I think Councilman Weingart brings up an excellent point, and it's a challenge for us, short of assigning inspection crews out there to monitor full-time what they're doing, our ability to know exactly when a utility... And the most dramatic is obviously gas lines. That's what you guys worked on last year. That's what people talk about, but honestly...
And my cable.
And cable, yeah. I mean, they hit a lot of other things. It's just...
Don't hit my cable.
The more urgent is the gas line, obviously. I think that this is a solid first step in putting things in place that allows us to hold them accountable. What's going to happen naturally with this is the bad actors are going to surface either through aware citizens, through the IURC, through fire department. It'll come in multiple channels, and we're going to have to internally work on our processes to track that appropriately. Longer term, if that doesn't cure the bad actors, then I think we're going to have to come back to this group and think about policy adjustments. But I feel relatively confident that what Lindsey's worked on here will allow us to at least start to surface those bad actors and now have the tools to hold them accountable, whereas before, we had neither of those opportunities.
Right.
So I applaud your efforts in, you know, dealing with this issue. I think this is a good first step, and we can adjust course once implemented.
Yeah. Okay, Lindsey, I just want to say thank you very much for putting us together, kind of a result of kind of what we went through this summer, and it's nice to start seeing some of this stuff, that we can put some teeth on it to really make sure they comply. So thank you very much for everything you've done for us.
My pleasure. We're also updating the actual permit language to include a few more stringent standards for restoration and, you know, exciting things like potholing.
Really exciting.
Thank you. So there's other questions? Eric and David.
If there was a language, I guess, that didn't state on what if there was a company that didn't self-report? I mean, that seems like that would be...
I would assume there's something that the IURC that would regulate that. I don't know what the ramifications are, but I would assume there's something.
So there's some incentive to not self-report, which is good.
It would be difficult not to self-report, especially if you hit another utility, because you're going to have, let's say you have a gas line hit, you're going to have either people on the property complaining, or the gas company is going to know that it's been hit. You know, if you have, obviously, an electric line, you're going to have a pretty big problem. If you have a communication service like AT&amp;T, certainly customers are going to start complaining, and AT&amp;T would go out and say, oh, there's a big hole in the ground, somebody's been out here excavating. And then if you don't self-report, then the IURC does have fines that they can apply.
Okay, any other... Okay, I'm sorry.
And actually, the IURC, the Underground Pipeline Division, is very favorable if you do self-report. If you do try to do the right thing, they do give you the benefit of the doubt whenever it comes time to issue either training or fines.
Any other questions or comments?
At first reading.
First reading? All right, on to 052118E.
All right. Lindsey Bennett, Assistant City Attorney, for the record. I'm here on the bicycle ordinance, which is an enactment of a new section in Chapter seventy-one, seventy-one point four zero, and a replacement of Chapter seventy-three. Chapter seventy-one deals with motor vehicles and their rights and responsibilities when sharing the road with bicyclists. It requires drivers to exercise due care to... It regulates maneuvers such as turning left and turning right in front of bicycles, how to maneuver in and out of bicycle lanes. It also, importantly, mandates a three-foot passing zone whenever a vehicle is passing a bicycle. Chapter seventy-three, we actually do have some bicycle provisions on the books, so we're going to update those and supplement those. Some are the same, such as, you know, carrying only the amount of people that the bicycle is intended for. You can't ride on the sidewalk if it's a hazard to pedestrians. But we also added that bicyclists are to obey state laws, traffic devices, control devices, signs and markings that are in the roadway. They also cannot weave in and out of cars. They need to keep a safe distance whenever they're at stoplights and stop signs. If they're riding in the roadway, then they need to wear reflective material and helmets. And also, bicyclists cannot block or close a roadway in order to facilitate other bicyclists to go through. As far as penalties go, for the bicyclist provision, we've put that with the Ordnance Violations Bureau. We proposed to put it with the Ordnance Violations Bureau, so it would be a twenty-dollar fine, doubles in thirty days if not paid to forty dollars. That payment's made to the OVB. With the motor vehicles, I had originally proposed to put it in seventy point nine-nine with moving violations. I want to do a little bit deeper dive into state law, make sure that that is the appropriate place for that, because it might be more appropriate with the OVB. So whenever I come back next month for second reading, I'll have an amendment for that specific provision. But I'll be happy to take any questions you have.
Any questions, comments, council?
I have a question. The reflective material, is that or reflective apparel, are you thinking more in the evening? Because that didn't identify whether that pertained to day and night, and so I just didn't know if that needed to be further clarified, because...
It's intended for both day and night. You know, you can also, you can have your bright green shirt or jacket on, but there's also material that they can put on the bicycle to make it a little more reflective. I know that there were some questions about, you know, bicyclists who wear all black, how can we make sure that we see them? So that's where the reflective material actually on the bicycle was proposed.
And apparel, too? Would that be for the day as well?
Yeah. But I can make that clarification whenever I come back for second reading.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Lindsey had a couple of questions. I sent this email to, or this out to, the email list that I have of different HOAs, just to get some comments. And only one person sent this to me, but they were asking about the fines. They just thought they were too low. I know that you talked about there were some metrics there, so I don't, between first and second. I don't know that they're too low. I told him that this is more to acknowledge so that, basically, the driving public knows that there are some responsibilities, and also the bicycling public. And it was more about that and less about, you know, a fine, we're not going to have the police officers out looking for this all the time. So that, but that was only one. But I did get more and more, like three or four replies back on the, what Sis always was talking about, the helmets and the reflective material. So I'm an engineer, so I'm kind of black and white. So if I read seventy, well, it blanked on me, seventy-three point one-one dash C, basically, that's where that code portion is. So if I'm at my house, and I go out into just the neighborhood street, that's a public road. Do I have to have, you know, a helmet and things like that at that point?
Yeah, if it is a public road, it is... The roadway is defined as a portion of street used for vehicular traffic.
Okay, that's what I thought. I don't know if we're going to...
If you want to limit that, we certainly can do that. I, you know, I think the intention is more for the main roads.
It's just obvious, but I just don't know... I understand if you can see a car very close to a bicycle, that's very easy for the police officer to do something, but if you're not wearing a helmet, I don't... You should.
Yeah.
But if you don't, I don't, I don't know if... Because I think, what is the motorcycle law? It's... Isn't it an age or something? I think it's an age.
No, there's no... I believe there's no law for helmets.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no law for bicycle helmets either.
Okay, but we can take a look at that and just amongst ourselves. But that's a couple of comments that I had, and I wondered the same thing as far as the helmets.
Okay. And as far as the fine, you know, I'm certainly open to any suggestions. It was just, the twenty-dollar fine is what we impose for parking. Parking's paid with the OVB. Most of our fines are anywhere from twenty dollars to fifty dollars, so wanted to keep it kind of in that range. And like you had said, it's more of a educational, not necessarily, and we want compliance, not necessarily punitive.
That's right. Like I said, one gentleman reached out, and I said I'd just mention it just so everybody could weigh it over the next month.
I think between first and second reading, given your comments, I'd like to have Chief Thompson weigh in on some of the applicability or ease of enforcement if we were to make modifications, just, you know, like the night-day stuff, and this street versus that street. It becomes, if putting the law can be difficult at times for them to enforce, we'll take these comments and circulate them around and have his feedback as well at the next meeting.
Any other questions or comments, council?
At first reading.
All right, first reading, thank you. Moving on to 052118G.
For the record, my name is Megan Schaefer with the Fisher's Planning and Zoning Department. This item is a request to approve a text amendment to the Thoroughbred PUD to allow for forty attached single-family dwelling units. The PUD is now going to be known as the Overlook at White River. So this property is located on the southwest corner of one hundred and forty-sixth Street and Allisonville Road. It's just south of the North Ridge Retirement Living Center and north of the Kingston Estates. So like I mentioned, they're proposing forty attached units. These are going to range from three to six unit buildings. They will share access with North Ridge off of Allisonville Road, which is an existing access point. The development standards have been updated to accommodate the attached units. This would include setbacks, impervious surface, living area. There's been a gathering spot identified near the woods and basin to activate that. And then per the PUD committee request, they've also added evergreen trees in the central common area. One thing that they're going above and beyond on is the landscaping buffer to the south. So they had a neighborhood meeting with these residents to see what they could agree upon. And so they've increased these landscaping standards to preserve any existing trees. They're going to have twelve evergreens per a hundred feet, and then they're also going to have a four-foot mound. This did go through PUD committee in March. They are updating the architectural standards to allow for wood composite siding. They're going to allow garages to exceed more than fifty percent, just because they are attached units. And per the PUD committee's request, they're going to increase the brick veneer on the facade facing Allisonville Road, so the brick percentage will be higher on those. And then per Plan Commission request, seventy-five percent of the individual units will incorporate at least one rear feature, such as rear porch, rear pergola, rear yard fence, or other rear feature. Petitioner's here to also speak, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Members of the City Council, for the record, my name is Steve Harden. I'm a partner of the law firm at Fager, Baker, Daniels, and I'm pleased to be here this evening, representing Westport Homes. And with me from Westport is Matt Dunn and Chris McKinney. They're right there in the audience if you have any questions for them. Thank you, Megan, for your update. One of the things I just wanted to mention, too, the neighborhood to the south had been very active over the years on what happens along the Allisonville Road corridor. We had met with them multiple times on previous projects for the site. We did that early on here as well, and had really good feedback and guidance. And the Westport team, particularly Matt and Chris, worked with them on what they would like to see on that southern border, and they were happy with how that worked out. We really left it to them on what they wanted to see, and we had good meetings with them, and that was a result. One of the things, too, on the concept plan that Megan was showing you, this is the one that's actually in the ordinance, shows where the existing trees are. These are the two lots, or the two buildings that have the black dots that she was referencing that would have all that first-floor masonry, and then also just showing that there will also be additional landscaping along the perimeter as well. We're happy to answer any questions that you might have, but we had no remonstrance, favorable staff recommendation, and unanimous recommendation from the Plan Commission. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. Any questions or comments from counsel?
Yeah, real quick, Steve, is that site plan still up?
Yes, sir.
That little notch, that's, this is a small question. That's at Lyft Station, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, and I'm sorry if it was in here, I just was not able to find it, but I was trying to compare what was already approved versus what your request is. So I guess, real quick, how many units were on the already-approved version, the two thousand and fifteen?
So there were two assisted-living buildings, and then a handful of duplexes. So I believe, David, if I remember right, there was maybe sixteen individual units in each of the two assisted-living buildings, so maybe thirty-two plus, I think there was maybe three. Mark, do you happen to have the original community ordinance in there? So it was approximately that number.
Okay, that helps. I just, I just couldn't visualize what that was, whether it was fifteen to forty versus, so about thirty-something to forty?
Yeah.
And then, there were duplexes, right? So the most were two together, and then there was a little bit of landscaping in between each one?
Yeah, so there were...
There we go.
Two big assisted-living unit buildings, and then there was duplexes here with the ability to do another duplex back here, if I remember right. And so then we changed to this, met with the neighbors, and I think they were supportive of being a hundred percent residential and not having the rest there.
Okay. That's fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, from the Planning Commission side, I want to thank certainly the group doing the project. They were very amenable to the changes that we asked to be made, continuing what I think to make a better project overall. And again, the receptivity to the materials and the amount of materials, et cetera, and then certainly kind of breaking up that rear fascia, which was bothersome, I think. We certainly appreciate the, the ability to work with the city, and thank you to Steve. If there's no other comments or questions, I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, motion by, anybody else have any questions or comments? All right. Motion by Pete. Second by Rich. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you, Steve. Zero five two one one eight H. Restored approved text amendment to Thorpe Creek PUD.
Good evening. Again, for the record, my name is Megan Schaefer with the Fishers Planning and Zoning Department. This next item is a request to approve a text amendment to the Thorpe Creek PUD to expand the PUD an additional ten acres to allow for eighteen additional lots. It's not pulled up here. There we go. So this property is located south of the existing Thorpe Creek Development, west of Florida Road. Here's the proposed concept plan, so it'll be eighteen single-family lots. This is the same development standards as the current Thorpe Creek Area C, which is a hundred-foot wide lots and two thousand to twenty-four hundred square foot minimum living area houses. They are going to connect to the existing Thorpe Creek Development to the north, and they will be providing a stub street to the south, to, that's undeveloped land there to the south. To the east and west, that, those are not ideal locations for stub streets. To the east, we're going to have a preservation area, and the terrain is rough there. And then to the west, that's where the proposed Geisse Greenway will be located. So those are both not ideal locations. The builder is Fisher Homes, and the eighteen lots, they'll need to meet the same architectural standards as the existing Thorpe Creek PUD ordinance states. Staff does recommend approval, and the petitioner here is here to speak as well.
All right, any questions, comments from counsel? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, sorry. Steve, I forget about you sometimes.
That's okay.
You're never here, I never see you.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll be real brief. My name's Steve Harden, for the record, and I am here representing Grand Communities and Fisher Homes. And with me from Grand Communities, the developer is Amanda Webb, and from Fisher Homes is Sean Sullivan. We agree with everything that Megan just said, and it has been, the project's been very well received as we've gone through the process. The one request that we at least wanted to offer to you, let's see if I can do this right, is the, there was the request made, and we know that stub streets have been a hot topic here in Fishers over the last couple of years. There was a request, as we went through the process, to add the stub street, as you saw in the concept plan, to the south. The Fisher Homes, or in the Grand Communities team, agreed to do that as we were going through the process. They just at least wanted to offer up to you that they would prefer, if the council was amenable to it, to have that be as open space. They're not trying to add any lots to this. The property to the south has a very significant creek area back through here, and so it's difficult to access it. But their, their thought was that instead of having... So right now, they have agreed to the stub street that's here. Their preference would be, again, they're not trying to add any lots or do anything, they just would rather that be open space for the benefit of the neighborhood, so that there's not traffic driving through there, going to, to a field back behind them to the south. They're open to do it. If the council says nope, we want you to put the stub street in, they're willing to do that, and they want to be good neighbors here in the community. They at least wanted to present as an opportunity that if the council was willing, they would prefer to have that as open space, so they at least had a second thought as they were coming to council, and wanted me to at least bring that up to you tonight. Thank you very much.
Any questions, comments?
Thank. The sidewalk is missing right here on the south side of one hundred and twenty-sixth. Can we get that installed when they build this? They put it right here, just a little piece, but this is missing here. I assume when they develop this, we'll get the sidewalk on this. The city, this is Thorpe Creek Elementary, the city and the school corporation has installed the sidewalk here and all the way over, right there, to the property line. So we've got it on the north side, we're missing it on the south side.
Yeah, I can speak to that. So the path along one hundred and twenty-sixth Street was installed by the developer, two thousand and five, two thousand and six, when this first came about. The city around that same time came in and actually did a road expansion project and took out the path that the developer had already installed. And so now our engineering department is looking at reinstalling that path, but it's not something that we were comfortable asking the developer to reinstall, since they had already installed it in two thousand and five, two thousand and six time.
Good question. Any other questions?
I have a question. I guess it does concern me a little bit to not have there be a stub street. I, I know the topo's challenging over there, but I guess I would be open to it. I mean, my, my question would be this, is if that stub street does not go in now, if it remains some type of common area, are they willing, if at a later time, that land to the south were to come back before us to, to be developed, that it would be their requirement to put it in at that time? So if, if you will, it's an easement that's granted today with some type of requirement. But it does worry me, honestly, that, that, that goes away. And that's new. I don't think we, we were aware of that at Planning Commission.
No, I agree, Rich, and that was the exact comment I was going to make. I have no issues with them making that an open space, or a little kind of a pocket park, if you will, to kind of stop cars from running into a, an open field. Having a teenage boy, I understand how they think sometimes. So I have no issue with that, but I would want to preserve that area for any future that says if we need to connect that as a stub street, that there is no remonstrance by then, the neighborhood, that they can't, I know you can't do that.
That is, that is something, if I could give just an ounce of advice on this, having gone through this multiple times, there have been councils before that have made this very decision that says, hey, we understand you mean I want to put this in today, but we could require you to put it in in the future, or have an easement to put it in when another neighborhood comes in. And I'm telling you, the neighborhood, once it's established, will, will, will not be supportive. So I think you either decide to do it today, or you don't do it, one of the two. But don't, don't put the false premise that you can leave it there for the future, and then, oh, it'll be smooth sailing. Whether you say in a document or not, there'll be no remonstration. You go try to put a stub street into a neighborhood, it just does not go well.
It, it's part of our ordinance, it's required, put it in.
I'm a contract guy, I would just say, put it in later, but whatever, I'm not going to get in the way. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve as is.
Any other comments or questions before we, I just want to make sure everybody's been heard. All right. Motion by Pete.
What's the motion? I'm sorry? Prove it as is?
Approve the...
Stub street, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the way it is.
That's the way it is right now, yep. Correct? That's where, that's where it's awarded, okay. Just want to make sure. All right, so motion by Pete, second by David.
John.
Oh, I'm sorry, John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Real quick, just a learning point, and I don't know who this goes to, but on one hundred and twenty-sixth Street, when the path was put in, then taken out, is that just a unique situation? Because you know, normally when that goes in, hey, what's our thoroughfare plan? Because you put it in not at the road today, but in where it will be.
It's a bizarre deal. Jeff, Jeff Hilton, it predates the vast, well, pretty much all the staff, even Eric can't really speak to it, because he doesn't recall, but we don't really know why, when they were redoing that road, they felt the need to go that far back in the construction limits to have to remove the, the path. But it is now our, as Megan appropriately said, it's now on the engineering department's radar, and we're looking to figure out how to get that path section done.
All right, move, I'm sorry. All right, moving on to zero four one six one eight.
Good evening again. Megan Schaefer with the Fishers Planning and Zoning Department. This next item is a request to approve an annexation for the Whitskin property, which is this property identified here that we just spoke about, the Thorpe Creek expansion. So this will be third reading for that annexation.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, second by Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, move on to zero four one six one eight A.
Good evening. For the record, Taylor Navarre with the Planning and Zoning Department. This item before you is the third reading of a voluntary annexation of approximately four acres on the south side of East one hundred and twenty-sixth Street, just southeast of Promised Road there. It's currently two lots and is part of the overall redevelopment of the site, which is on the agenda as the next item, that we go over in more detail. But again, this is third reading for the voluntary annexation.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Pete, second by Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes, thank you very much. Moving on to zero five two one one eight I.
For the record, Taylor Navarre, Planning and Zoning Department. As previously mentioned, this is part of the redevelopment of the site on south side of East one hundred and twenty-sixth Street, which is currently zoned R2 residential. The proposed rezone would go to PUDC, commonly known as the VIVE Exterior Design PUD. This would incorporate the VIVE Exterior Design Company that is currently located further west on one hundred and twenty-sixth Street. They are an outdoor living and design firm, which kind of utilizes the space as a design feature and some landscaping utilities there. This site would also have some of their inventory in what are called hoop houses, but there would not be any onsite sales, such as a nursery. This would all be kind of consulting and inventory storage. The PUD has gone in front of the PUD Committee back in March and received approval for the site design and the overall architecture, as well as received unanimously favorable recommendation by the Plan Commission last month in April. As part of the PUD, they are also plating out a portion on the eastern side of the lot for the QCOM utility facility. It is currently under construction, as it was allowed by right under the previous R2 development standards. The PUD will also establish that as an allowed use. So that will be accessed by an ingress egress easement off of Old one hundred and twenty-sixth Street, and again, will be over on the eastern portion of the site. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the PUD, and the petitioner is here as well to, to speak.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. President. Members of the City Council, for the record, my name is Steve Harden. I'm pleased to be here, representing VIVE Exterior Design. And from VIVE, our local business owner, Ryan Coyle, is here. Ryan has got a very successful business right now, located at one hundred and twenty-sixth and Cumberland. And so if this is approved, he's raring to go. I've seen the plans they're working on and getting started with construction right away. As Taylor mentioned, and thank you, Taylor, for your work on this project, a lot of coordination has been undertaken. There's some old right-of-way, some plating issues that we'll be working on outside of this, this venue, but this is, hopefully is viewed as a significant upgrade to this challenged site. It's kind of hard to develop, and this seems like a wonderful business to be here. So we're here to answer any questions. Otherwise, there was no remonstrance at the Plan Commission, unanimous favorable recommendation from the PUD Committee and the Plan Commission, so we'd respectfully request your approval tonight. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments?
Second, I thought it was a great project. The Planning Commission, I still think it's a great project now, it's a great location for that, so it's huge inspiration.
If Pete's happy, I'm happy.
There you go, Rich.
If Rich is happy, I'm happy.
All right, motion by Eric, second by Pete. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much.
Yep. All right, moving on to zero five two one one eight J.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Dale Davis. I'm with the Department of Planning and Zoning. The next item before you is a text amendment to the MedTech PUD. This is a fairly short text amendment. This is the MedTech PUD on one hundred and thirty-sixth Street, between one hundred and thirty-sixth and I sixty-nine. These are four rather large parcels with a few common areas. The request is to remove the two-hundred-foot of frontage requirement from the underlying zoning C3 standards, and to establish in its place a one-point-seven-five acre minimum lot size requirement. Now, this is being done for a specific project. This is going with the MedTech, or the MedTech CIO and Urology of Indiana project, where in doing their site design, they did discover that they could fit another building on their site and still park it and serve it properly, so this would really be a bigger return to the development. Though this will change the standards for the overall development with these additional lots, the primary plat is built out. So if any other lots beyond these are sought by the development, a primary plat amendment would have to go to our Plan Commission. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Petitioner is also here to help with your questions.
Would the petitioner like to speak? Or is there, just want to answer? No, okay, all right, all right. Any questions or comments from counsel?
Wait, still, still get one more. Is this all going to be parking, or is this another building?
That's parking.
So we're just going to have three buildings, what started with four lots?
This was all originally one ten-acre lot. This, what the, we came through previously to Plan Commission to add additional lots to their primary plat, so that this could be split into two lots, so Urology and CIO could have their own properties. But in doing the site layout, and with shared parking, there is room to have a third structure on this property. So now we can have three buildings all sharing the same parking.
Okay, any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, second by Selena. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. On to zero five two one one eight K.
For the record again, my name is Dale Davis, a planner with Planning and Zoning. So this next request is a text amendment to the MedTech PUD. This PUD was established back in nineteen eighty-six, it's one of our oldest PUDs. This one was kind of unique from what we're used to seeing, where only really the uses were established... used to seeing, where only really the uses were established within the PUD, and all the bulk standards and setbacks and architecture and landscape, everything was established through protective covenants, which had a 20-year life and expired in 2006. So that forces the city to now look at what the comparable zoning would have been, and that's C3, which is a little bit more strict than what that previous zoning would have been. In recent history, Launch Fishers moved back into the Northeast Commerce Park in 2016. We got designation by the state as a certified tech park last year, and that means as redevelopment occurs, there's additional funds for the city to recapture. One thing I do want to note is that through this rezone, or this text amendment process, any uses that are legally established, they will become legal nonconforming, and they're not expected to change with the passage of this. Just to go through the uses very briefly, the previous list of uses pretty much allowed all the uses that were in our 1980 code under the commercial and industrial uses. This tailors the uses more towards the terms of our current UDO and towards those uses you might expect with a tech user. If you look in the bulk standards, what we've done is tried to lessen the setbacks to encourage redevelopment, give a little bit more usable space on the sites. The picture below is Bang's Labs. This is one of the existing buildings in Northeast Commerce Park, and it's a type of architecture we're kind of looking to embody with this text amendment. We want to emphasize the front facade, break up the massing of the large walls when you have a bigger user, and set forth additional standards for things that might otherwise not be compatible with one another. We are bringing in more landscape. The previous ordinance was fairly quiet on landscape, so we wanted to match more of what we're doing in the rest of the community. And the review process is going to be the same as it is currently, but will still require PUD approval. And I wanted to bring forward something that was recently passed by our PUD committee. This is a building expansion that's going forward on the east side of Technology Drive. And once in the foreground is an existing building that's now being wrapped by a large expansion. So this is the expansion from the white part to the right. So you can see that it matches the existing building. This is kind of what we're embodying with this ordinance, but you can see that there's a larger building behind it to be that bigger space. With that, when this was at Plan Commission, we did have some business owners speak, some neighbors speak. There were some conditions put on the approval. We wanted to put language in there that the PUD committee can look at the height issue for roofs where they're not on visible facades. So that's been added to the PUD. One of the neighbors wanted smells to be added to the language, where we also spoke about noise, so that was added. And some parking concerns were brought up by neighbors as well. The PUD really wasn't the place to address their concerns, so that's been forwarded to our Transportation Committee, and we'll be speaking about that next month.
Okay.
So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dale. Any questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Hold on, I have just a couple things. Is there anybody else that has anything? Okay. Just want to make sure, as the staff comments, I appreciate Dale, your responsiveness today. Just want to make sure that as we continue moving along, I think it's a, it's the right thing that we're doing back there. There's, we got a fit and finish to that area. The development of the tech park is extremely important to the vibrancy of our community. And I just ask that continued that the staff talks with owners of the Best Choice Fieldhouse as people have raised concerns with regard to traffic. And at times, there are issues there, just because there's a lot of people that show up. But they move in, move through a lot of people around this country that come to Fishers as a result of that facility. I think it's a, it's a great asset. However, once again, it is one of those places where, you know, as it's developed into a tech park, it's, there's, there's a lot of different vibrancy there, a lot of different activity. And so we just want to make sure that communication's clear from both ends. And so I would just ask that. That's, that's my thing. Any other comments? Got a motion by Pete, second by Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any unfinished or new business? All right, and we have item 27. We've done this this year. We have community comment time. You do not have to speak on anything with related, that's on the agenda. You can. You can also speak on anything that you have questions or comments about with regard to Fishers. So I'll open it up for public input time. If you would like to, you state your name, and you can come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have a three-minute time limit. I think Brad is ready with the, with the trigger, the button right there. He's ready to go to hold you to three minutes, but you're, I'm going to open it up for public comment at this time. I see no one approaching, so I'll close that time. And motion to adjourn is by Pete, second?
Second.
Second by Cecilia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.